Microphone on, okay. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we're gonna start with the invocation, and that's going to be led by Pastor Paul Elgin from the First Presbyterian Church, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Mayor Pro Tem Matt Herman. So if you can stand, if you're willing and able.
Good evening, City Council, people of Casa Grande. I know that if you're like me, you're still giving thanks for things that you thought about Thursday. And we have a lot to give thanks for here in Casa Grande. Not least among them is being able to pray before the City Council meeting. So thank you one more time for this opportunity, and let's pray together. Lord, please be in our midst as we come together as your body to lift up our city, our country, and our leaders. Psalm 86 said, "All the nations you have made shall come to bow before you, Lord, and give honor to your name; for you are great and do wondrous deeds, and you alone are God." Please protect our city and our country from the division that challenges our ability to live lives pleasing to you. Defend the vulnerable and the voiceless. Bring justice to those who have suffered injustice. Realign and unify your people in your Son, Jesus Christ, who is the Author and Protector of our faith as we cry out to you for our land. It is in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Matt. Okay, roll call. Adriana, if you can please accept for the record that the council is all here. So noted. Thank you. And first on the agenda are the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we accept for the record the City Council regular meeting minutes from November 17, 2025, and the youth commission minutes for October 25, 2025 as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next are the claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we accept the claims report for November 13 through 2025 through November 25, 2025.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the claims, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And the meeting agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, no specific changes, but we are proposing an executive session if the council would like to move the reports.
Okay. So move up reports.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to accept the meeting agenda with the change of moving the reports, item N to after item L. So move the reports before executive session.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have a couple of special presentations this evening. So I'll go ahead and first start, we have, actually, I'll come down. We have a group here with us. I'll come down. Sorry, construction over here. Okay, so on November 4, 2025, the city of Casa Grande joined a growing list of supporters, including the president of the National League of Cities, and hundreds of leaders to date in making a commitment to volunteerism by form of a proclamation. The proclamation urged all citizens to care for one another, volunteer, and engage in acts of service and kindness that contribute to our city's betterment and its inhabitants' well-being, regardless of background or belief, and made a commitment to promoting volunteerism and leveraging JustServe.org to make it easier for residents to find and engage in volunteer opportunities, and to regularly acknowledge, celebrate the contributions of volunteers. Today, we have Julie Crockett, who is a Just Serve Outreach Specialist out of the Tempe area. She will be giving a presentation and information on Just Serve. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor Fitzgibbons, members of the City Council, esteemed city staff and fellow residents of Casa Grande. Just a few weeks ago, like Mayor Fitzgibbons mentioned, the National League of Cities Conference recognized Casa Grande as a Just Serve city. Tonight, we're gathering locally to celebrate the city's leadership and unwavering commitment to strengthening our community through the power of volunteerism. This recognition is a testament to more than just a title. It's a testament to action. Mayor Fitzgibbons and the City Council members, you constantly walk the talk. Over the years, you've led by example, actively participating in crucial volunteer projects like 9/11 Day of Service and the Martin Luther King Jr. Day events, just to name a few. Furthermore, we wish to specifically acknowledge how the spirit of service permeates every level of city government. Our city's departments, including the police department, the fire department, public works, not only provide essential daily services, but also extend their aid through dedicated volunteer outreach. They often volunteer their own time, and they create invaluable opportunities for residents to serve alongside them, demonstrating a holistic dedication to community well-being. In a world where divisions often seem easy to find, the act of serving together and lifting one another creates profound unity. This collective effort builds the support system essential to a thriving community. Thank you, city of Casa Grande, for embodying the spirit of service and for your dedication to making our city a brighter, more connected place. It is my distinct honor tonight to present the Just Serve City Club Award to the city of Casa Grande. Congratulations.
Get on the other side of the balloon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And again, thank you very much, you know, for including us and being part of our community. And like you said, this is not just an individual, you know, it is a city. And we know how much our employees, you know, the staff and the council do participate in. Your organization makes it easier for us. So thank you very much. So the second presentation we have, and I don't know, are there some kids from the flag football team? Is that any of you guys here? No one's here today. Oh, shoot. Okay, well, we had it on here. We wanted to recognize the Casa Grande Union School Cougar Flag Football Team for their commitment, teamwork, and outstanding representation of the Casa Grande community throughout their season. The Cougars demonstrated resilience and heart in every game, highlighted by strong leadership from head coach Alastair Mounts and standout performances across the team. The season also marked the final chapter for several seniors, the program's founding mothers, who helped establish a strong foundation and set a lasting standard of excellence. Although the season ended in a hard-fought battle, the team's determination, growth, and sportsmanship reflected the very best of the Casa Grande spirit. So, I know they're not here, but hopefully they're watching. Please join me in congratulating the Casa Grande Union Cougar Flag Football Team for an exceptional season, and we will make sure we get them some Casa Grande pins when they're to their team. So congratulations to the team.
Bob, got you on.
Well, thank you, Bob. Okay, so next on the agenda, let me get my glasses here, is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? From the council, from staff? No? Or from the public?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Adriana, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beedelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are on the public comment section, so I have a couple speaker cards. And so we'll go ahead, if you can come up, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you can give your name and address. First, I have Peter Encinas. Hi there, Peter.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Council, City Leaders. Peter Encinas, 700 East Rodeo Road here in Casa Grande. I just wanted to make an announcement of, I have some friends that are at church down the street, TLC, Trudy Lutheran Church. And this December 12th and 13th, they're having an amazing event at the church. It's free. It's called the Walk Through Bethlehem, where they create a whole city of Bethlehem in the back parking lot of the church. It's right on Trekkle, just south of Cottonwood, like I said, TLC. And they walk you through the birth of Christ and through this little area. It's really awesome. They take groups, each group at a time. It's just an amazing time. Everybody's dressed in costume. It's great for the spirit of the holidays. And so I just wanted to put that out there. I know they have some signs throughout the city promoting it, but I just wanted to come up here and just promote it for whoever's watching. Take your kids, take your family. It's again, December 12th and 13th, that's Friday and Saturday, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's free for everyone. And at the end, they have hot chocolate and coffee as well, and cookies at the end. So bring the family in the spirit of the Lord, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara Sundest.
Oh, my name's Barbara Sundest, 1273 East Cordova Avenue, Casa Grande. I'm not gonna say anything about the encampment project, because I'm really hoping and praying that that committee that we're really working to make some progress. Although I do want to say, I talked to, at Laundry Love on this past Wednesday, I talked to Doris, and she said people offered to move her. She doesn't want to move from Casa Grande. This is her home. And I mean, I think, I know people say, why don't you move back to Wisconsin where your family is? No, this is my home. This is where I live. This is in my heart. So anyway, she doesn't want to move out of this Casa Grande. She wants to be in an encampment where she can still do what she does. But anyway, that's separate. Because this past just seven days, there are four situations. One young lady ended up, she has an apartment, but she couldn't get in until today. She had, so there were two weeks where she had no place to live because the situation with her roommate was just unsatisfactory. And so she had no place to go, no place to live, in the rain. And I did go to Cara, and they said they have no emergency funds. The lady at Cara that I talked to was as upset as I was about the fact that this young lady who's working, and, I mean, she's got two jobs now. So she was really, did all the right things, but we don't have anything to help in a case of an emergency. And then the other thing is, and I know some people know about it, my friend Rochelle was told she had to get out of where she was staying for like, three or four years. She was there in her car, and they told her she had to get out by Friday. And I know, people are working. So right now, she is living in Cite Motel, which, I mean, I don't think anybody checks to see what kind of places the, the bed's broken. She's afraid to use a refrigerator. She said, actually said she's gonna go back to her car on Wednesday night because she said, "I can't go in that room until I clean it out." So I mean, there's just no place. And then one of the ladies at Laundry Love, she has physical disabilities, and she's living in her car. She's like, around my, well, she's probably younger than me, because I'm old. But anyway, she's elderly, though, and she has no place. She's living in her car, and she is on a waiting list to get into Kachina, but she's number eight in the list. So who knows how long that'll take. So, and then, like, another friend of mine who lives in her car, has physical problems, she works as much as she can. But these are just four examples in the last week, I know, in the last week, of people who have no place. We have no shelter. So I'm just praying that anybody who hears me can donate a house or money or something, so there could be a shelter for these elderly women. So thank you for listening, again.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? I know I have a couple here on a different item, but not public comment. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. Okay, item I, one.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a contract with Wilson &amp; Company for the design of Cortson Road from Colorado Street to Peart. The total request is for $309,418. Cortson is currently one lane in each direction in that segment of roadway, and due to the development in the surrounding area, population growth, the increased usage, traffic volume, has significantly increased. Rodeo Road also provides primary access to two schools, Cactus Middle School and Chola Elementary School. Design of the roadway needs to occur as the first step of the construction process. It's going to include survey of the project area, right-of-way identification and acquisition, design elements in line with the general plan and best engineering practices, cost analysis of an adjacent trail listed in our 2023 Community Services Master Plan, and engineering plan sets that will be used for construction. We did do a request for qualifications for this project, and Wilson &amp; Company was chosen as the most qualified contractor. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions?
Comments?
Okay, I don't think so. So if we can get a resolution number, please, Adriana.
Resolution number 5855. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Wilson &amp; Company, Inc. to provide professional engineering services for the Cortson Road Improvement Project from Colorado Street to Peart Road, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve resolution number 5855.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Kevin, I just have a quick point. Can you just let the public know what this means? This is the first step, so what happens after this?
Well, we'll go through the design phase. Once we get this segment, this is the first segment of the design project from, on Cortson Road, from Panal all the way to Peart. So this is the first segment. We're trying to get out ahead of the development in that area. So once this design is done, and we're at a point where we can bring a contractor on, we'll go through that process as well. Actually, we have, Allison Mills is already under contract, so they're working as the C Mar to help design this segment. So as soon as the design is ready, we can go to GMP for that segment and get that under construction.
So timelines?
Nine to 12 months.
Right, okay.
Before construction could begin.
Right, okay. So we can't just snap our fingers and have it overnight, so.
We can, but it doesn't do much good.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second. If we can get a roll call vote, please, Adriana.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beedelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item I, two. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract to Horrock LLC to provide professional engineering and surveying services for the design of Thornton Road from Main Avenue to 400 feet south of Cottonwood Lane for an amount not to exceed $285,700. We did do a request for qualifications for this project for the design services, and Horrock was the most responsive and qualified contractor to perform these services. The scope of this work will include the final design of the widening of Thornton Road from a two-lane to a four-lane roadway, including the preparation of plans, specification, cost estimates, and required A dot clearances. The design was initiated to expand capacity and modernize the roadway and utility infrastructure to accommodate Casa Grande's rapid industrial growth in that area. Again, the total amount of this project is $285,700. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Okay, I don't think any questions, comments. We can get a resolution number, please. Oh, you have one here. Hold on, we have one really quick.
Sorry, this is the one that we got the federal grant, to be clear, with Congressman Siskomani's office, correct?
That's correct.
And it was held up for various federal reasons, but now we're finally getting it released? Again, nine to 12 months, you think?
Yeah, they'll be covering the cost of construction. This is just the design phase.
Okay.
And the construction is 3.7 million?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, Adriana, if we can get a resolution number?
Resolution number 5856. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Horrock's LLC for the design of Thornton Road from Main Avenue to near Cottonwood Lane, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Horrock's LLC.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5856 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We can get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beedelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item I, three?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract with Cactus Services LLC using a 1 GPA State Procurement Contract Number 22-15P-01 to repair the parking lots at the North Operations Center in an amount not to exceed $763,000. Staff did work with this contractor to do a thorough evaluation of our pavement conditions on our north operations site. That's where we house all of our public works divisions, except for wastewater, of course, and airport. It's located just south of the airport in the industrial park, and it's served public works for the past 21 years. So, great facility, but it is starting to show its age. So this'll give us an opportunity to bring the asphalt surfaces that our employees work in and around to a level that is safe and adequate to support that operation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Matt.
Kevin, a few years ago, we purchased a paving machine for our own use to do parking lots and small projects and stuff. Why aren't we doing this on our own?
Yeah, we purchased that paver, I believe it was 23 years ago. So your memory is very good.
23 years?
At one point, we did have quite a few staff members that were very proficient at operating paving machines. Over the years, we've kind of lost that. When we purchased that, it was a little different atmosphere, and most of the projects that we do were straight-line paving projects. We do not have the staff levels to perform the detailed paving that is a parking lot. So it's not something that even with the paver, we would take under consideration. As a matter of fact, the paver is one of those pieces of equipment that is sitting there, and we're evaluating what to do with it. So we'll probably be getting rid of it.
And there's, just for the record, there's also limits within the statute where you can self-perform work, and a project of this size would fall outside that limit. can self perform work and a project of this size would fall outside that limit.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Adriana, if we get a resolution number?
Resolution number five eight five nine. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Cactus Transport Two LLC, DVA, Cactus Asphalt for the repair and replacement of asphalt at the North Operations Center, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cactus Transport Two LLC.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move to approve resolution number five eight five nine as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember B. Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hellston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, there's a couple appointments to our boards and commissions. The first one is the appointment of Sean Calvert. I don't think I see Mr. Calvert here today, but if we can get a motion to approve and also the reappointments of Jeff Cardida and Anthony McDermott.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? I see you back there, Mr. Cardida. Thank you very much for being part of that commission. You were hiding back there behind Jody's head, so I didn't see you. Thank you, thanks, Jeff. Okay, now the appointment of Charles Wright to the Fire Personnel Retirement Board.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to appoint Charles Wright to the Fire Retirement Board.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? A thank you to Chuck Wright. And the final one is the Board of Adjustment, the appointment of James Stillwell and the reappointment of Steve Hayes and Charles Yetenak.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? And I don't think I see any of them here, but thank you for participating again on the boards. Okay, item K one, the city clerk. Will you go over that?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, item K one is the election of the swearing in of the mayor pro temp for 2026. Each year, the council selects one of its members to serve as mayor pro temp, consistent with the city charter. Under Charter Two, Section Eight of the Charter, the council designates one of its members to serve in the role of at the pleasure of the council. The mayor pro temp performs the duties of the mayor in the mayor's absence or disability. The recommended action is for the mayor and council to elect a mayor pro temp to serve a one-year term from December first, twenty twenty five, twenty five, through the first meeting in December of 2026, which would be December seven, 2026. And once the mayor makes this election, we can proceed with the North Office.
Thank you, Adriana.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, it's been my honor to service Mayor Pro Tem this past year and I would like to nominate Brent B. Dillon to serve in the next term.
Second.
Okay. Are you going to accept that?
Yeah.
And before we move on, I just wanted to thank Mayor Pro Tem Herman for, I mean, of course, all the council for always going out and all the different things that we do, which is so busy, but but thank you for stepping in a few times when I wasn't available. So I appreciate your help as mayor pro temp. So thank you for all of that and look forward to you having your cell phone on speed dial, too. Okay, so I think there's been a motion and a second. I think the, not a roll call, or is it a roll call vote? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay. So does he officially take over now or do we, at the end of the meeting? I don't remember, Brett.
He would serve as as mayor pro temp now, but won't release.
So if you have to leave during the meeting, he'll be.
Oh, no, okay. I'll be here through the rest. Okay, so item K two. Jacqueline, hello.
Hi, good evening.
Can I say K two? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it is K two, yeah. The title.
Swear by.
Oh, we have to swear. Oh.
More to it.
I know, I didn't realize that. Now it's now it's going to be official. Yeah, I did say we're swearing.
Yeah.
I state your name.
Aye, Brent B. Dillon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Arizona.
And the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of mayor pro temp for.
Just discharge the duties of mayor pro temp.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Brent. I know they're going to move you around somewhere here. I'm not sure which seat you'll take over, but you'll be here?
Matt, yeah, we'll all be moving.
Okay, now item K two, Jacqueline.
Congratulations.
Good evening, council. This first item is for the annexation of Project Suoro. It's approximately one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one acres into the city limits. It's generally located between Selma Highway and Interstate Eight on the east and west sides of Thornton Road. However, there are a couple parcels north of that, north of Selma, near Chu Chu, as well as Burris. It's comprised of twenty-five parcels and two landowners. Penal County has an agreement with Lucid to lease purchase of the property as well as Thornton Corridor LLC property, which is the property just south, southern property along I eight. Tonight's request is, first request, excuse me, there are two requests for you tonight. The first one is the approval of the Infrastructure and Services Plan associated with the annexation via resolution. And if approved, the approval of the annexation and initial zoning of urban ranch via ordinance. Regarding the Infrastructure and Service Plan, per ARS, it requires that a city annexing area shall have an approved plan, policy or procedure to provide the annexed territory with appropriate levels of infrastructure and services to serve anticipated new development. This Infrastructure and Service Plan has been prepared and was provided for council for review and approval. Regarding the annexation process, proposed areas are logical and appropriate annexation areas regarding the current boundary of the city of Casa Grande. Proposed areas meet all legal requirements for annexation as set forth in the Arizona Revised Statues. Blank petition and associated annexation map were filed with Penal County on December tenth of last year. The city council held a public hearing on this annexation on January sixth of this year. Petition signatures were collected after the thirty-day wait period and the signed petition was filed with Penal County on February twenty-fourth of this year. The collected property owner's signatures exceeds the required fifty percent of the property owners and fifty percent of the property value. Regarding the initial zoning, ARS requires that a city annexing an area adopt a zoning classification that permits densities and uses no greater than those permitted by the county immediately before the annexation. Subsequent changes in the zoning of the annexed territory shall be made according to existing procedures established by the city for the rezoning of land. So to comply with this requirement, staff is proposing that the annexed property be initially zoned as urban ranch in conjunction with the annexation. Urban ranch is the Casa Grande Zone District that is most equivalent in terms of uses and densities to existing general rule, Penal County zoning of these properties. So with that, it is recommended that mayor and city council approve a resolution adopting the Infrastructure and Service Plan. And if approved, it's recommended that the mayor and city council approve the ordinance adopting the annexation and initial zoning of urban ranch. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
Questions.
Or comments? I know I have a couple speaker cards. Let's see here. I think they're all on K two, L one. So we'll go ahead and start. Mike Cruz, would you like to speak on K two or or do you want to wait till L? If you can give your name and your address, please.
Sure. Mayor, and I know you called up Mike Cruz. I'm with Mike, so I'm going to be leading off and he'll be following me.
Sure, okay.
So, good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Seth King. My title is Managing Counsel for Global Zoning, Land Use and Licensing at Lucid. And thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Again, I'm here with Michael Cruz from our Government Affairs team. You'll be hearing from him shortly. We respectfully request that the council approve the annexation and infrastructure plan here in items K two in the manner in which they're presented to you tonight. Just a few comments. Wanted to note that the, I think the story of this annexation from the city's standpoint is twofold. One, I think it's important, it extends the city limits down to Interstate Eight. And I think that's that's an important frontier for the city to reach and you've got frontage on both of the interstates. Additionally, this would add a large number of acres to the city that would be earmarked for industrial and commercial development. And that will set the stage in the future for increasing both the industrial tax base in the city as well as for the additional creation of high-paying jobs for city residents. Want to note that the proposal is consistent with some earlier actions that the city has taken regarding the property. First of all, it's consistent with your adopted 2030 general plan. And that that plan has designated, that plan has designated this property as an opportunity zone for manufacturing and industrial and has included it as part of the southern industrial area. Additionally, we're not quite at the zoning. That's the next item. But currently, the portion of the property that is proposed to be rezoned to I two is currently mapped as manufacturing industrial on your general plan land use map. And the portion that is proposed to be rezoned to B four, that's just the southern parcel, is currently designated for those uses on your general plan land use map as well. So again, you've got consistency there. Also want to note that this proposal is consistent with the three-party development agreement entered between the city, Lucid and Penal County in 2022. That agreement discussed the annexation of this property and that the portion being leased by Lucid would be appropriate for I two designation. I see I'm running short on time, so I'm just going to fast forward here a bit and note that there is no specific development plan that's associated with this annexation and rezoning. That's not part of the request that is before you tonight. There maybe have been some rumors that Lucid is proposing some big expansion of its manufacturing plant. That's not, again, part of what is before you tonight. And if I just could wrap up here very quickly and just note that any specific development plans would be compiled in the future and that we would bring them forward and they would be subject to site plan review and likely development agreements as well in the normal course. And those actions, of course, would be subject to notice and public hearings before a decision is made. So I think with that, again, would ask for the city council to approve the annexation and infrastructure plan and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet. We might in a few minutes. Thank you very much, Seth.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgibbons, Mayor Pro Tem Dillon, members of the council and city staff, Mike Cruz, head up Government Affairs for Lucid Motors here in Casa Grande and across the country. I do want to take a moment just to take a little time to talk about this. Being a local, very privy to what's going on, and I want to take a moment to really just dispel any type of misinformation or rumors or anything about this particular project in question this evening. As my colleague, Mr. King alluded to, this is really a continuation of that effort between Penal County, City of Casa Grande, Lucid Motors is part of that lease agreement. With this particular land, I want to ensure that you all know and the community knows that this request is part of the next board item is for the annexation and rezoning to industrial I two. This particular land is not intended or is eligible for use for any type of single-family housing, multifamily, high-density housing or anything like that. That is not the intent of this annexation. That is not the intent of this purpose. This purpose is really to create the framework and groundwork to be able to innovate, create new opportunities, jobs, manufacturing in the future for any type of industrial user which intends to utilize that land. So as we move forward, I just want to make it be known, there was some misinformation about these are public lands. This land is currently under the holdings of Penal County, under contract for lease purchase option with Lucid, which is set to come upon next year. So this is not public land in the aspect that people refer to as state land trust and land that belongs to the state, any type of BLM, BLM land that's with the Bureau of Land Management. So I want to make sure the community knows that that is not the case. This is land that belongs to Penal County that was obtained early on as part of this agreement. So with that being said, just to reaffirm to the community, this is intended for industrial use, comparable to what we're doing already at Lucid Motors. This is not intended for any type of single-family housing development or multifamily housing. And as operators in the area and employers, we're proud of what we do. We're the largest employer of Penal County and we're going to continue to work. A good majority of our community in terms of density and population that work at Lucid come from Penal County. So as a resident here, this is important to me. I want to make sure our community knows what's really up at for discussion and I'm happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Sure.
I think I heard you say twice, there's no multifamily housing planned for this area, is that correct?
That is correct. Even if you wanted to, what we're seeking as part of the I two designation does not permit from a land use planning and zoning perspective. So with this designation, no multi-purpose, multipurpose, single-family, high-density housing is permitted under this. The goal is really to create a framework for continual, continuous use for industrial that's congruent with your current general plan and proposed amended plan. So again, this is not for housing. This is strictly for industrial use.
And this is the same type of arrangement you had with the current Lucid Motors plan, right?
Yeah, so the current existing development agreement through Phase One, Phase Two of Lucid that we have at our existing site campus, which is over three hundred acres already at the southeast corner at Peters and Thornton. This really is annexing all the adjacent land within that area as part of that Penal Agreement. So for Lucid Motors, this is important for the aspect of any potential future development. And quite frankly, as my colleague, Mr. King, mentioned earlier, any future development agreement and development plan, site plan, will need to go to planning and zoning and before the council as well. And also have opportunity for public comment and public review periods. So what we're asking is not for anything, no particular site, just more of the administrative process to create the groundwork for future utilization, because this is the most time-consuming and actually, quite frankly, the most expensive part of that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey, no questions, yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we have a Jordan Greensley. Jordan, if you can please come up and if you can give us your address, please.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Jordan Greensley. Live at two eight two two East Osborne Road, Phoenix, Arizona, eight five zero one six. So I am from Worker Power. We're a nonprofit focused on making sure developers are responsive to community needs and input across the state of Arizona. I'm here today to request that the mayor and council delay the vote on this project. So we've surveyed hundreds of folks in the community. Many have cited concerns around the environment, infrastructure, quality of jobs created. As of today, about a hundred and sixty-five emails from residents were sent in asking for the council to delay this vote. The infrastructure and services plan for this project seems to indicate only what services are currently available and gives little detail on what infrastructure this massive development might require in the future. How much water and power will the Lucid expansion use? Are there guarantees that the developer will take on the costs of increased infrastructure development if necessary and that the cost for infrastructure development won't be passed on to taxpayers? And I know the the previous speakers have mentioned that will, you know, potentially come forward in future development agreements, but we have seen that this is a problem that happens where a lot of the approvals get approved without a lot of actual specifics about what it's going to be down the line. It makes it a lot harder for folks to have input into it because they don't exactly know what is being approved. And so. And so considering that this is a large development on over 1,200 acres of mostly public land, and I say public land, I'm not trying to say that it's Arizona State Land Trust land, just that it simply is owned by a government entity, the county. We're asking that the mayor and council delay a vote on this development until more detailed information, such as development plan, other items is made available, and there's an opportunity for more public engagement. A development like this one deserves extra care, attention to detail, and public input in how it is moved forward, given how large it is and the effect it's going to have on the community, both positive and potentially negative. So please consider delaying this project until more details can be released. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay, Seth King. Is there a Seth King? Oh, that was, oh, sorry, Seth. I didn't even see that there. Okay. Margaret Schultz. And Margaret, if you can give us your address too, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Margaret Schultz. I live at 310 West Medlock Drive, Phoenix, Arizona. I'm here today to request that the mayor and council delay the vote on Project Seguaro, including the annexation, rezoning, and general plan amendment. We have concerns, I guess this is speaking more to the next item, but we do have concerns in the rezoning documents. The rezon narrative says that this is a forward-looking application and planning effort. Therefore, the site has not been master-planned as to the exact nature, size, nor scope of employment uses. However, it's strange that the zone change narrative does not mention that there is already an end user for this site, Lucid Motors. Lucid is, as I mentioned, has a contract to lease the land from Pinal County. So there's no discussion of Lucid's expansion in the rezoning narrative. And we do have a question of why are there not more detailed discussions of what the Lucid expansion will entail and its impacts? These documents do not even hint at broad outlines of what this large potential manufacturing plant expansion could consist of. So since this is public land, we believe the public deserves to have more information on this project before it is voted on to truly be able to understand the impact it could have on the communities. We've spoken to many voters who have concerns about this expansion. And as my colleague said, over 165 sent emails, 165 people sent emails to the mayor and council requesting a delay. So more information can be gathered, and we respectfully request that you hold off on voting at this time. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, I think I got all of them. Is there anyone else on this item? We are in item, where are we again? Forgot. K, K two. Okay, any other questions, comments from the council?
No.
Before we get a... I think, I think the only question that I have, I mean, I know some of the speakers said that there was no public input and on January 6th, there was a public hearing. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, the public hearing for this was held on January 6th.
Okay, was there anyone that attended that hearing? I didn't see anything that...
I believe nobody spoke at that one, no.
Okay, and I believe there was only one correspondent. Someone had just a brief inquiry of something.
Correct. That was more on the zoning.
Okay, on the zoning piece. Okay.
And I did not receive any comments or inquiries prior to this meeting.
Pardon me?
I did not receive any comments or inquiries prior to this meeting.
From February until now, until December. Okay, and then there was also talk about their, you know, I mean, there's not going to be any room for public input and some of the people that came up to speak. But this, once it's annexed, will have to go with the city's, you know, regular site plan reviews and P and Z. So there is an opportunity for the public. Is that correct? Larry and Brett, if you can confirm that that is the case?
Yeah, and I can let Mr. Raines speak if you like, but it will have to follow our normal development processes. Major site plans generally no longer go to P and Z, but any conditional use permits for heavy uses that require one would still go through, you know, the planning and zoning. Major site plans are now administrative pursuant to the state legislature and the change that we made there. But they do still follow our public process, including our public notification that's required for those.
And our guidelines for everything that...
Yes, all the, all the guidelines that the council adopted effective back in November. You know, would still be followed, so there'd still be all the notice that'd be required prior to any development that would occur that would require a major site plan, which is pretty much any development.
Right. So to me, it seems like it's a benefit to have it at the city level so we can kind of control what that development is going to be. But go ahead.
One other thing, and I remember when Lucid built this first plant there and now, I mean, as far as infrastructure and stuff, that's all paid for by, like, anybody that develops in town. The city doesn't pay for water lines or anything. I mean, I've paid for my own sewer line and stuff too, so. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Herman. If you recall, Lucid, the city did enter into an incentive agreement for specific pieces of public infrastructure. Primarily, the roadway improvements is, again, we focus on a performance-based type of a system in Casa Grande when we do incentives, and typically, they are for public infrastructure. And I don't recall that there was much of a sewer line expansion because we had already run the sewer line to the existing site. We have made additional expansions since that point. But the primary focus for the city at that point were the roadway improvements that were made. And again, we're offsetting those against the, against the cost, against the additional revenue streams that typically are coming in by the development, either through the construction and/or by the abundance of the number of high-paying jobs that they create.
Which is our typical, our typical plan for, for major employments, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions then? Okay, if we can go ahead and get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5860, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the project Seguaro Annexation Area Infrastructure and Services Plan.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for approval of resolution number 5860 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Helson?
Yes.
Mayor Proteme Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Are you going to, do we move forward with this ordinance or do you have anything more, Jacqueline, on that?
That's all I have. No, you can...
Okay.
Oh, the second is the ordinance adopting the annexation and initial zoning to Urban Ranch.
Okay, so if we can get an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 3486, an ordinance extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Casa Grande, Pinal County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter four, Article seven, Arizona revised statutes and amendments thereto by annexing thereto certain territory contiguous to the existing city limits of the city of Casa Grande, known as the Project Seguaro Annexation and authorizing initial zoning of Urban Ranch U R for properties within said territory.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of ordinance number 3486 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Helson?
Yes.
Mayor Proteme Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item L one. Jacqueline.
So the first request is a minor general plan amendment to the Phase two growth area to Phase one for approximately 1,300 acres. Second request is a zone change from Urban Ranch to I two for approximately 1,198 acres and a zone change from Urban Ranch to B four for approximately 110 acres. Regarding the review criteria for minor general plan amendments for growth areas, here are the five criteria. It's covered within the staff report. Staff finds this criteria has been met. Development of the site is proposed to be developed as an industrial site. Regarding the zone change, here are the three zone change criteria covered in detail in the staff report. I'll be highlighting a few of these as well. Regarding the first one, that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including goals, policies, and other applicable elements. This part is part of the manufacturing industry land use area. And it's, one of the goals is to provide and expand the manufacturing industry land use areas to accommodate a variety of industries. Action step 1.1 is to identify locations where it would be beneficial to increase this area within the city. And goal number five is to encourage appropriate and responsible industrial development in appropriate locations. An applicable element is land use element guiding principle number two, and that community growth should be driven by industrial, corporate office, professional services, financial services, research and development, and other similar developments which offer opportunity for high-paying quality jobs. Regarding zone criteria number two, a rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. So again, they requested I two is appropriate zoning for a manufacturing industry per the general plan 2030. There are not specific densities nor intensities for properties within this land use category. However, it does include site design standards that call for new development to minimize adverse impacts to surrounding and existing land uses through its site design. And then through, this can be achieved through design at the major site plan stage. And the third criteria, that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. City's current demand for general industrial land is significant, and this rezon would expand that available area. This area does abut existing I two zone land to the north. However, there are still a few rural developments to the east and west within the county. So we have proposed some conditions of record associated with aesthetics, architectural standards, and that no conditional uses for uses involving the storage, utilization, or manufacturing of volatile or explosive materials within 600 feet of existing residential uses and within 600 feet of Thornton Road or Chuchu Road. And at this time, major site plan applications, additional analysis will be considered based on use. We did work with AppPlant on these conditions, so they are aware of them as well. And regarding the B four zone change, that the action is consistent with the general plan, including the goals, policies, and other applicable elements. And this is within the commerce and business area. And one of the, goal number one is to develop economically competitive regional centers of commercial activity. One of the action steps is promote a wider range of uses than traditional commercial areas, including blended commercial and industrial sites to prepare for changes and demand for retail and other commercial uses. B four, called community services, but it's really a hybrid between light industrial and commercial uses. And then one of the applicable elements is economic development. And one of those goals is to focus on attracting employers who create higher-paying jobs aligned with key industries. And one of the action steps is to identify businesses that fit into the key, city's key industries and suppliers, and then develop and employ customized recruitment efforts to attract them. And that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents. The requested zoning for community services B four is an appropriate zone district within the commerce and business land use category. And again, with this being a key intersection along I eight and Thornton being a gateway to the community, we have proposed additional conditions of records regarding aesthetics. And again, the applicant is aware of these as well. Regarding notification efforts, initial zoning notifications of application and review were sent last December. And notifications for the February Planning Commission were sent to property owners within 1,000 feet. We did do all the necessary republications for tonight's meeting in November. Prior to zoning commission meeting in February, I did receive two inquiries wanting to know more about the project. And one thought their property was within the annexation area, which it was not. And I verified that with the adjacent land use site. I did not receive any inquiries prior to tonight's meeting. So with that, the first recommendation for the minor general plan amendment. At the February 6th, 2025 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for a minor general plan amendment to change the growth area from Phase two to Phase one. Do you want me to pause there before we move to the other recommendations?
What do you, what do you think we should do, Brett?
I think it's ultimately, you know, we're doing one presentation, so I think staff can show all three. We will be having, have to have three separate public hearings. So we'll hold a public hearing and then a vote on each item.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Next request for the zone change to I two at the February 6th, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting voted 7-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for the zone change from Urban Ranch to I two with the following conditions of record. And the third request, at the February 6th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for, from Urban Ranch to Community Services B four with the following conditions of record. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So, any questions?
No questions.
We'll go ahead. These are public hearings, so we have three separate public hearings. We'll go ahead and start with the very first one. I don't know if you can put that up on the screen. Perfect. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and start with a public hearing on resolution number 5273.40. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on this particular item? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Fitzgibbons, Mayor Proteme Dillon, members of the council. As we move forward, I just wanted to bring up the fact with this particular rezoning, some of the comments made earlier pertaining to just the lack of transparency. I just want to provide general edification. As many of you know, as you do this and vote on these items on a daily basis, I think the community is not fully aware of how this process works. What we're asking for is part of that annexation, which you did approve, thank you very much, and this particular zoning request. Think of a building, a house. Before you design a house and start nailing wood to nails, you have to have a foundation. The annexation and the zoning is that foundation for us to build on. It provides the framework and it provides all the necessary items. Right now, just to speak, there's no major site plan because we don't have one yet. It's, this is, we're laying the foundation for the future. And this administrative process allows us to be able to do so. As we move forward in this process, in the event we do have a major site plan, we're ready to present. We're very transparent, and those are the opportunities I encourage the community to come out and engage with to learn more about what's involved to date, just with Lucid Motors itself and the work we've been doing. Those costs that we incur, they're part of the development agreements we have with major utilities, the city, and other entities we do business with. Through that work, we've been proud and thankful to be able to expand infrastructure in the area. Most recently, with the Western Transmission Water Project, bringing an immense amount of additional water from the eastern part of the city to the western part, which is something that all users get to benefit from. So these projects are in result of just the investment of businesses like Lucid and others within the industrial corridor that are focused on being able to do business, create jobs and opportunities, but also too, for the betterment of the community. All these resources and infrastructure is shared by others. So I just want to make sure that the community is aware that this is something that, as we move forward, will be voted on through the council itself, and if anything, does need to go to planning and zoning. But we adhere to all notifications that are standard, a part of 30-day process and others. So as the plans become available and as that information's out there, we would be excited to share that with the community and with you all as we continue in this journey at Lucid. Happy to entertain any additional questions before you move forward.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and if we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution 5273.40, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the city of Casa Grande General Plan 2030 as adopted by resolution number 5273 and as previously amended by amending the growth area from Phase two to Phase one for approximately 1,308 acres of property, generally located along the east and west sides of Thornton Road and South Selma Highway and North Venter Street Eight, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve resolution number 5273.40 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember...
Councilmember Haldston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem B. Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the second one, ordinance number 1178.47. Here it is on the screen. This is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open it up if anyone would like to address the council. Sure. Thank you, Seth.
Sure. Mayor, members of the city council, again, for the record, Seth King, land use attorney at Lucid. Just to incorporate the earlier comments I made regarding the annexation into this rezoning item, particularly the comments that this I Two zoning would be consistent with the general plan, both the land use designation as well as the goals and policies that your staff highlighted for you, and also, again, just to emphasize that we do not have a development plan at this point in time to share, but we look forward to, when we have that available, to discussing it with the city and the community at that time. So thank you for your support and to your staff, who've been great to work with over the last several months, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Seth. Any, anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and if we can get an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.470, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Urban Ranch U R to general industrial I Two and property generally located along the east and west sides of Thorin Road, side of Selma Highway, and north of Interstate Eight, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve ordinance number 1178.470 as presented. Second.
Sorry, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Haldston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem B. Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, and the final one here, ordinance number 1178.471, B Four zone change. This is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open that up if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments here? If we can get an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.471, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Urban Ranch U R to Community Services B Four and property generally located at the northeast corner of the Thorin Road and Interstate Eight, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.471 as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If we can get a roll call vote, please. Adriana?
Councilmember Remo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Haldston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem B. Dillon?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, that's, we're gonna go ahead with council reports and then go into the executive session. So why don't we go ahead and start with Sean?
No reports. I'm sure you guys are gonna cover the light parade here coming up, but besides that, I have no reports.
All right, thank you. Anthony?
Just events coming up. January the nineteenth is the MLK, the annual celebration that we'll be doing at Pier Park. It's gonna start at ten a.m. We'll still be doing the food distribution that we did the last three years. I think last year, we gave over a hundred and fifty bags out in our community. We have food, we have singing, our mayor will be speaking, and I'll be coming behind the mayor. And so we always have a wonderful time, you know, one year it rained on us, and we're right here in the chambers here, and, but it's just another way of giving back to our community. We have that day of service, so our youth will be coming together. I think last year, we had over four hundred youth that'll be coming together, our football team, both, all the high schools come together. We included a couple of elementary schools as well, charter schools, and we're just looking forward to a good time of doing some servanthood as well in our community as we unite together as one and continue to build up our community and train and teach our youth that, when they grow up, they can take our place and continue that unity. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. I do have a couple of things as well. Got to, the mayor was out, so I got to with Larry Rain, city manager, meet with Senator Ruben Gallego when he was in town, and it was a brief but good meeting. I've never, I'd never met him before. He's a very down-to-earth guy, very personal, nice to talk to, and he was really concerned about our needs as a community, especially transportation is mostly what we talked about, as we know, and more on the federal side, looking at the I-ten area. And he was also, you know, asking about how people were doing in town. He donated to the food bank while he was here, had a town hall with some people at the VFW, so it was a good visit. We appreciate him coming by, and his staff has followed up with us to make sure that we're getting what we need. So it's, it was a very good visit, and I think, thanks, Larry, for being there, and we had security from the police, so I felt pretty important. It's kinda cool. Exciting news, the last, the former, the last president of the Youth Commission is now attending Georgetown University, and we just found out today that the current president of the Youth Commission got accepted to Duke University with the full ride today. We're very excited, so.
That's awesome.
Just saying, we got some really good kids on that commission, so that's exciting. Also wanted to thank Danny's, Danny's not here, he's probably out hanging up lights, but it looks great.
Aaron's here.
Yeah, Aaron's here.
All right, Aaron.
Where is he? Oh, there he is, hey, Aaron. Behind Jody, too. I'm just kidding. Just kidding. But he, you know, I wanted to pass it along, Aaron, everything looks great. I saw the new tree at Erdman Plaza over at Five Points, really cool, like animated LED thing, and the park looks great, and I think they're doing, they're doing more when I was over here, so. And I won't say the other part, but before the parade, from two to five, is a lot of activity down there at the park, so. Pictures with Santa, vendors, community groups, crafts, photos, so go check that out before you go to the parade. And then Thursday night, Salvation Army is having the Police versus Fire fundraiser at Sioux Casa Grande. So, is it Sioux Casa Grande?
Yeah.
You got the flyer right there. Tickets are twenty-five bucks, and, and they're going against each other. I think it was Saint Nick's something, and, yeah, and Saint Nick's Knights, or it was pretty cool, Police and Fire, so they're gonna be raising money against each other to see who comes out on top to kick off the red kettle season. I know the stories are very big in that, and it should be a very nice event, so that's going on Thursday. That's all I have.
All right. And then Bob?
Thank you, Mayor, but no report.
The only thing I've got is to congratulate the University of Arizona Wildcats for the territorial cup.
Rub it, rub it in.
And just waiting for the next canine event. Just saying, that's all I've got.
That's bad, 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 okay.
No one agreed to that.
Yes, you did. Accepted it on behalf of all.
Who's he?
Uh, Councilmember Remo.
He's admitting it, okay.
Well, that'll be fun.
He'll be there for support.
I will be there for support at a distance. I have no reports.
Okay, thank you. No, and it's definitely a busy time of year. I just first wanted to just thank all the different nonprofits that were out there and serving our community, and, you know, we talked a lot about service today, and, you know, there's, there's, there's so much of that going on in our community, and you saw it during the Thanksgiving holidays, so thank you for all those organizations, and it's continuing with the, with Christmas and everything that's going on with all the organizations. Salvation Army's one of them. I'll be there, I'll be there at that event, and I have signed up for bell ringing, so if any of you haven't.
Me, too.
Come on, come and, come and help these guys out. They, they count on it every year. So definitely sign up for bell ringing, so thank you very much. You know, there seems to be a lot of, just inquiries, I guess I'll say, on, you know, housing in the city of Casa Grande and infrastructure. You all are getting it just like I am, but, you know, just, you know, wanted to update that we, you know, we definitely have a housing study that's going through. We received that housing study. It's going to planning and zoning, and then it'll come back to us to approve, and then we're gonna post that online for everyone to have access to, you know, where we are with housing and where we're going. So that was, I think it was presented to us about a month ago, right, Larry? Little over a month ago? If someone would like that report, we can definitely give that to them, you know, send a copy just for their reference, but we will have that posted online, and we'll make sure we share with the council once that's available for the public to see online. The second thing, a lot of people are inquiring about infrastructure projects. You know, we approved a couple things today to get those balls rolling. You know, I think we have fifty-six projects in, you know, line, and so we have timelines, and that is going to come online, we believe, in January. They're working on that, our staff are working on it, so then the public can go in and see exactly when the McCartney Road, you know, CIP capital improvement, if people don't know what CIP is, capital improvement project, what that timeline is, what stages they're in, you know, any traffic signals, things like that. So it just seems that there's a lot of inquiries, and so it, we're trying to get that information accessible to the public so they have that, and for us to keep on top of. So hopefully by the end, the beginning of the year, we're gonna have that available. And then, thirdly, we are gonna be conducting a apartment housing study. That'll probably be going, it'll probably take us about ninety days to kind of get that, you know, where we are with, with apartments and that housing study. So we are getting that information, and we'll be sharing it with the public. As far as, you know, I've had the privilege of participating in a, in a Home for Heroes, we welcomed home, back home to a wonderful lady that grew up here in Casa Grande, U.S. Navy Gunner's Mate First Class Hillary Ruff. She was giving, given a mortgage-free home by the Home for Heroes program, which is a national organization that provides housing to our veterans. So we're just, it was just so exciting to see Hillary come back to the city of Casa Grande. She grew up here, went to school with one of my daughters, and is really proud to call Casa Grande her home. So she will be, has her two children and her, her, whatever, spouse, not spouse, God, I can't think of a partner, that will be living in the home. So beautiful home, and thank you for, to Homes for Heroes and all of those that were there to see this dedication for her service to our country. So let's see, you talked about meetings, you know, we're definitely not missing a meeting with anyone we can talk to about the needs. Thank you for attending that with our senator. We also, I'll be meeting with Governor Hobbs in the next couple of weeks to also talk about the needs of the city of Casa Grande. Senator Schock will be meeting with, and of course, we, I met with Teresa Martinez and Representative Lopez, so we're definitely making sure that we are out there, talking to everyone, talking infrastructure, talking housing, talking about the needs that are critical here in the city of Casa Grande. So that will continue. Yes, exciting for the evening, or the electric light parade. The, the tree lighting starts at six p.m., but the other activities are from two to five at Pier Park. The pier is looking awesome. Aaron, thank you to everyone there, that's just so exciting to see everything, and it's just so great to see the staff out there, too. They're just like so happy, out there mowing the lawns and getting things ready, so, so I'm super excited to be there, so please join me on stage, six o'clock for the tree lighting. So if any of you are gonna be there, please join me for the tree lighting. And Wednesday is the APS Energy Update, update at the Recreation Center, if anyone's, was it tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow, okay, I thought it was Wednesday, okay, tomorrow. At the Recreation Center, I know some of you will be participating in that. And I think that's it. Thank you all covered everything else. So we'll go ahead and move into, if I can get a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second.